Okay, well, good evening and welcome everyone. My name is Madeline Sadek and I'm the CEO and President of the Alameda Chamber. And we're doing this great candidate forum event in partnership with the San Leandro Chamber. We're grateful for that. And our representative, that's going to be our moderator, is none other than our Vice Board Chair, Becca Parada. So, thank you so much. And now it's all yours, Emily.
Okay, well, thank you again. Yes, we are always delighted to be in partnership with the Alameda Chamber. This is our second time that we've done this together. I think it's worked out really well. So, thank you, Madeline and Becca, for being here this evening with us. I'm Emily Grego, San Leandro Chamber Commerce President and CEO. And our moderator this evening is Gordon Galvin. He is a member of the Eden Healthcare Board of Directors. And he is a former San Leandro City Council member. He is the owner of Galvin and Associates, which is a government relations and project management company. He also owns the legendary Acapulco restaurant that's based in Alameda, which I think we've all probably been to a few times. And he is a longtime San Leandro Chamber member of 25 years. So, thank you, Gordon. Appreciate you doing this for us. Also served on our Board of Directors. So, we're very lucky to have him here in San Leandro.
Thank you, Emily. I'm happy to be here.
Yes, thank you, Emily, and thanks, everybody, for joining us. I'm just going to kick us off with just a little bit of housekeeping in terms of our ground rules this evening. Very similar to last time we did this. We'll start off with introductions, three minutes each. And then we're going to go into a series of five questions that Gordon and I will alternate. And then after that, two-minute closing remarks from each of our candidates. And the chat has been disabled and we will not be taking questions from the audience. We do have five questions. If we blow through them quickly for some reason, we also have a bonus round. So, stay tuned for that. Okay, so we're really excited to have both Rebecca Kaplan and Lena Tam with us. Thank you so much for joining. I think we'll start off, if you would, Rebecca Kaplan, by giving us your three-minute introduction.
Well, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and it is a great pleasure to be back here with all of you. I give my greetings and appreciation to the Alameda and San Leandro Chambers of Commerce. Thank you for your collaboration and for putting together this important conversation as we talk about how to build stronger and healthier communities. My name's Rebecca Kaplan and I currently serve as the Oakland Council Member at Large, representing the entire city of Oakland. And prior to that, I served on the Board of AC Transit and as a State Assembly Legislative Aid. I first got involved in electoral politics volunteering on the campaign of Senator Kennedy of Massachusetts. While I did my undergraduate work at MIT and I did a master's in public policy at Tufts University. And then I moved to California, where I attended Stanford for law school. In my public office, I have worked closely and thoughtfully with our business community, including when foot patrols in our business districts were cut, I was the one who found the money and brought the budget amendments through the Oakland City Council to restore them. When businesses were being overcharged on inspection fees, being charged much longer than the inspections took place, I brought the amendments through council to fix that. As homelessness has been identified and recognized as a rising crisis, I took action to acquire dorms and hotels so that we could get the homeless off the streets and into better situations. And we've launched the proposal to expand illegal dumping crews. I've also had the honor to represent all of Alameda County on our Alameda County Transportation Commission, where we work together with a business and community coalition to pass a significant expansion in investment in our public infrastructure, fixing sidewalks and crosswalks and roadways, including the plan to improve the connections on and off of Alameda with a bicycle and pedestrian bridge and the Broadway Jackson Interchange Project. We've worked to improve projects in San Leandro, including with more rapid public transit, better bicycle and pedestrian safety, and improving and harmonizing truck routes. I have been honored to build public-private partnerships, including a collaboration between public agencies and private companies to bring the largest zero-emission truck fleet to Alameda County to reduce air pollution and improve economic opportunity. I would be very honored to serve as your supervisor and I'm honored to be endorsed by a broad range of community members and groups, including the San Leandro Democratic Club, Alameda Progressives, the Oakland Chamber of Commerce, the Democratic Party, and many others. I'd be very honored to have your vote. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Rebecca. Okay, let's go over to you, Lena. Introduction, three minutes, please.
Good evening and thank you for inviting us back as we move into the November runoff election. I am Lena Tam and since the primary election, I'm honored now to have all three mayors within District Three, Oakland, Alameda, and San Leandro supporting my candidacy. This is important to our campaign because although I grew up on the island of Alameda, but work in Oakland Chinatown, we can't function in government as an island. We need bridges and tunnels and collaboration and support from our neighboring cities. When we address public safety and homelessness in Oakland, it helps Alameda and San Leandro and vice versa. Having served as an elected official and appointed official on the Alameda City Council, the Alameda Healthcare District Board of Directors, and the Alameda County Planning Commission, and as a Water Resources Manager at East Bay Mud, getting things done for our community is about we, together, and us. And this requires that type of collaboration. My proven track record on getting housing built, saving Alameda Hospital, supporting our youth in getting the Boys and Girls Club built, advocating for parks and open space, ensuring a safe and reliable water supply, all of this requires collaboration. I'm also running to bring the programs that the late Supervisor Wilma Chan had put in place and bring it to new heights, expanding a mobile unit for family support services at the schools and our efforts to address poverty and food insecurity with the All-In Program. She has also been the go-to person for the county that is comprised of one-third of Asian Americans that goes beyond District Three. And I want to fulfill that role on the Board of Supervisors. I will address the issues of community safety by revitalizing our economy through supporting the businesses, particularly in the downtown areas following the pandemics. This includes fully funding public safety so they have the staffing and the tools they need to help people feel safe when patronizing our business. Well, I want to address the issues of homelessness and shortage of housing by funding more navigation centers, including the one that is at San Leandro that's being developed to convert a former hotel, but have an accountability system that tracks the placement and case management of our unhoused community. And last but not least, healthcare access for all, particularly mental health care. As a daughter of immigrant parents, I know the importance of having access to bilingual and culturally competent staff to bring dignity in getting healthcare, particularly mental health care. We need more facilities and staffing and we need to reimagine the delivery of mental health care services. I have enjoyed the endorsement of over 150 community members and I look forward to your questions as we elaborate more on those endorsements. Thank you.
Thank you, Lena. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started with our first question. The governor has signed a $308 billion state budget package. How much funding will go to Alameda County? And how would you determine funding for each city your district represents while also building the county's reserves? And we'll start with Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you very much. One of the things that it is absolutely essential that we strengthen and that I am committed to doing as supervisor is bringing more of the state funding to our county. Alameda County absorbs a disproportionate share of air pollution, of traffic congestion, of homelessness, and of other problems, largely because surrounding counties have refused to build their fair share of affordable housing as identified in the Regional Housing Needs Assessment and because the physical structure of our region with Alameda County at the heart of it, we serve as the port, we serve as the gateway, we serve as the truck route and freight corridor. And that means that our community suffers disproportionate asthma so that the goods that people in the whole Bay Area want to buy can be brought to them. One of the things that I have excelled at in my elected career thus far is bringing state money to our local community for vital needs. That includes, in Oakland, coming up with the plan, identifying and passing the Innovative Macro Program that provides civilian crisis responders to respond to 911 calls about mental health and related issues so that those calls can be better and more efficiently handled and winning over $10 million from the state to expand that program. When it comes to working to clean our air and support our local economy, I worked together with a public-private coalition to win over $30 million from the state for a innovative zero-emission truck project that includes facilities in San Leandro who will be paid and have jobs and business opportunity upkeeping and maintaining new zero-emission trucks that includes partnership with East Bay Mud and the creation of a hydrogen fueling facility that will let us turn waste into energy. And that includes jobs for truck drivers as well as maintenance workers and fuel producers. And we won many tens of millions of state dollars for that project. Alameda County deserves a much greater share of state funding for affordable housing and we can leverage that money by mobilizing public land that the county owns to build affordable housing and using that as the local match, which will allow us to score higher in the state evaluation and be able to thus win the money to build more housing for our workforce and to help remedy homelessness. The question of how much of that state budget we will get has not yet been decided because many of the funding lines are competitive grant applications. And so my commitment is to maximize the amount we get so that we can provide services for the mentally ill such as Prop 63 funding so that we can build affordable housing and house the homeless so we can clean the air and create jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Lena.
With the $100 billion surplus at the state level, the county will be getting an unprecedented infusion of funds that will help jumpstart a lot of our plans to build housing and expand shelters and move more toward a longer sustained funding stream other than the one-time nature of a lot of the funding that we've been seeing that was filled by Measure A1 and Measure W. And I'd like to leverage those funds. There's $12 billion that's being earmarked specifically to address the mental health crisis that we're facing in the state. And a lot of that will come into the county and I want to implement a lot of the grand jury's findings when it comes to mental health care reform, making sure that we have the kind of access and accountability, making sure that we also have the kind of support services that's more than just 8:00 to 5:30 and integrating it well with the 988 program. We continue to prioritize in Alameda County the issues of homelessness that involves a range of issues with poverty, mental health, drug releases from prison, health issues, and the issues that we are constantly facing. And one of the greatest drivers of homelessness that Oakland has found is affordable housing stock. And each of the cities in District Three, Oakland, Alameda, San Leandro, have already started good programs to address homelessness with navigation centers like the Village of Love in Alameda, the Lau Family Development in Oakland, the Covenant House, and others for LGBT communities. I would like to see funding go to help San Leandro purchase the Nimitz Hotel that will be serving as a navigation center that's near a homeless encampment to get more RV parking communities, tiny homes, transitional housing, anything to add to the addition of available housing stock that we're going to need for our unsheltered. I think we are all going to be in this together as a county and what happens in Oakland, like I said earlier, affects Alameda and San Leandro. There's 4,000 people that are homeless in Oakland, but Oakland obviously doesn't have the capacity to begin to house all the homeless. But we also need to have a better accountability system. The second audit that Oakland showed is over $69 million was spent in three years and there was no accountability and tracking of where that funds went to third-party providers. And we need to have a better system to make sure that we are successful in using the state and the county's funds.
Great, thank you. So, let's continue with that theme of funding. The county provides safety net services. Unfortunately, funding is counter cyclical. When most people need the safety net, we are in a recession and counties receive less funding from the federal and state government. How does this funding cycle impact our county hospitals, Alameda Health System? And what are your ideas for improving their financial stability? And let's start with Lena.
Having served on the Alameda Healthcare District Board of Directors and also serving currently on the Alameda Hospital Foundation, I have become a little more intimately involved in understanding some of the funding stream issues. I think the funding that the county has received and will be, will receive in this next batch to address our recovery from COVID and the pandemic will go a long ways in helping with some of the programs. But the longer-term issues that we face, whether, you know, it's seismic retrofit at Alameda Hospital, what's going to happen to Altobates, you know, eventually making sure that we have a sustainable system at our trauma centers, whether it's Highland or Washington or Eden. I think those, those funding sources are going to have to be, in a way, will have to be structured in a way that we have a reserve and that we can deal with these cycles that we, we seem to have when our economy tanks, like you said, when we absolutely need the funds. So, having that structure is going to be important to have a more sustained stream of funding that is critical for a lot of our programs. The navigation programs are a core part of the county's homeless and care coordination efforts and that will continue to receive funding. What we will need to see is more funding for rental assistance that is clearly in its second phase. And we will need to find and allocate sources for that because we are going to be facing some issues in terms of understanding what it means when we are going out of this pandemic and we are having to deal with a debt situation that both landlords and the tenants are facing when it comes to the, the current situation where we have an eviction moratorium in place. So, those are the kind of things that I'd like to see financially happen at each of the, the local levels.
Great, thank you. Rebecca, same question.
Yes, absolutely. We need to make investments that pay returns in terms of job development, business development, and growth of revenue for our community in order to beat the counter cyclical problem that demand for public services go up when the economy is struggling. And what do I mean by that? The Alameda County Government spends hundreds of millions of dollars on goods and services and needs to do a better job of prioritizing local businesses for those contracts. Because that money, when it is invested in the local community, will pay us back multiple times by creating local jobs and local revenue. We need to do a much better job of utilizing county-owned real estate in ways that generate jobs, revenue, and tax support for our community. For example, the county co-owns the almost 200 acres at the Coliseum Complex, which has been allowed to languish without generating significant revenue. We have launched a project that is moving forward to build shops and bars and restaurants and hotels and convention centers and a WNBA team and soccer and other activities at the site, including now also a new police administration building that will provide public services on that site and create jobs and revenue and activate our local facilities. That will also allow us then to repurpose a huge site at Seventh and Broadway as well as the county court building behind it to build mixed-use development with ground-floor retail, with housing above, and other mixed uses. By making those types of investments, we can increase our long-term ability to bring in the revenue. It also means passing policies that protect our revenue streams. A few years ago, I worked together with a broad coalition of local elected officials from cities throughout California to pass a policy that online sales would be subject to the same local sales tax as non-online sales. It was called the Amazon Tax. It was a big fight in Sacramento a few years ago and we won. We passed that legislative change. And at the time we passed it, it wasn't that much money. People weren't shopping online that much. But as a matter of principle, we said those sales should be subject to the same tax and not disadvantage local brick-and-mortar businesses. Then, when the pandemic hit, the fact that we had passed that policy saved our county. Our county's revenues did not go down in the pandemic because we kept collecting the local sales tax on the online sales. We also need to invest more in prevention. It is so much cheaper to treat a mental health disorder or a physical health disorder when you reach someone early and in a community-based setting. And I would expand community-based mental health and community-based health clinics so that we don't end up spending more money and more suffering later on.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to the next question. In the next two years, California's 58 counties will be tasked with setting up new court systems to address the needs of people with severe mental illness who often languish on the streets. What is your opinion on Care Court? And how would you work with the District Attorney's Office to implement and maintain this new system? Rebecca Kaplan.
Thank you so much. The biggest problem facing our mental health challenges in California is the lack of adequate treatment slots for people in need of help. And that is taking place at all levels from top to bottom in our mental health system. We don't have enough treatment beds for people who need long-term inpatient care. We don't have enough slots for short-term care in crisis care. And we don't have enough practitioners for people who need what some call lower-level mental health interventions. People who are looking for a therapist or a counselor are having incredible difficulty finding them. And so what that means is that people dealing with mental illness are facing worse and worse situations when they don't get early intervention. And many of the mentally ill end up getting locked up in jail as our jail system becomes the de facto mental health provider as we don't have adequate resources in the mental health care system. As a result, the county has been sued and rightly so. Because if you're going to lock someone up who needs mental health care, you absolutely do have to then provide them the mental health care. And when that's not being provided, one should expect that would elicit lawsuits. But the solution needs to also look further upstream to reach people before they get to that crisis moment and provide treatment that is both more effective and less expensive by investing both in more beds, more long-term mental health treatment centers, and more community-based health clinics. Alameda County is eligible for state funding through Prop 63 and other resources that can be used for these purposes and we need to prioritize it. We also need to significantly invest in job training for mental health workers as well as for other healthcare workers for whom we are facing shortages. And I would like to launch an innovative program of publicly funding education for people to become these essential workers. Many of the people who would make great mental health workers for our community don't have the money to go and get the degrees. And so we need essentially the equivalent of a public interest loan repayment program where we fund them to get their education and their credential to be able to serve in these vitally needed positions in which we have shortages. And then if they take a frontline position in Alameda County, those loans get forgiven so that after 10 years working in a needed position in our county, they wouldn't owe anything back. Those types of programs have been used by law schools to encourage people to go into public service work and we very much need it in our mental health and public health systems. And so I would seek to launch such a training program. Until we have the beds, it will be very hard to solve those problems. And I want to say, this is also Ronald Reagan's fault. And, and I know as a Democrat, it's tempting to say everything is Ronald Reagan's fault and that's often true, but this really is something that Ronald Reagan decimated and we need to restore those services.
Thank you. Lena.
I have met with the families with a seriously mental health, seriously mental illness. And I have heard a lot of their heart-wrenching stories. And I support the governor's efforts with the Care Court Act. I think that is for extreme, and it's still voluntary, but it empowers people, guardians, family members, to provide the help to people that are seriously mentally ill and that don't have the ability to get that kind of support. This is going to be phased in and this is something I would like to work with our District Attorney's Office in gradually moving our system toward that kind of care that is absolutely needed and necessary. But we also need to have the facilities and the personnel to take in people that are in need of this kind of court-mandated care. Because right now, if you are being taken in for a 51-50, you go to John George, there's, it's, it's already beyond capacity. You, you go there for 72 hours or you, you end up in jail. And, and you, that, those are not good options. We need more facilities like the Benita House that has longer-term care. And that is some of the reforms that I want to see that were actually recommended by the county's grand jury back in, in the summer this year where they said that we need, we need to expand our program. We need a county mental health system that can provide the safety net for the thousands of the homeless and the near-homeless residents in the county who struggle with serious mental illness. And the county grand jury also found that our mental health system is in desperate need of reform. The, you know, residents are witnessing daily that we don't have an adequate system and it's difficult to navigate. The behavioral and health services department have a really a great dedicated group of people, but they are struggling because there's not a holistic way of getting that community care. And we have a budget of more than half a billion dollars for this and it's just not being used in a way that is the most efficient. And the county could stand to lose the money if we don't use it in the, in the, based on the restrictions under Proposition 63. So, those are the things that I'd like to see is, is fix the system now and, and, and then pursue newer programs and newer facilities and newer personnel.
Great, thank you. I know the city of Oakland recently had a homelessness audit and I don't, maybe Ms. Kaplan will comment on that. But my question is that the county funds the East Bay Economic Development Alliance, a chamber partner. What are your priorities for this agency and how will you continue to build and grow business in the county? Let's start with Lena.
So, EDAB, the organization that you mentioned, provides a collective that can help a lot of the small businesses. And one of the things that I would like to see the county work towards beyond the webinars that they have and the seminars and is to help a lot of small businesses that I've met with in, whether it's Little Saigon or in Alameda. Some of the small businesses have had issues with, for example, complying with our ADA, the Americans with Disability Act, because that's become a, a significant litigious issue. And a lot of the smaller businesses need some guidance, they need some assistance, they need legal advice. And I would like to see a, a lot of the, the Business Alliance groups help some of these smaller businesses. But more importantly, I want to see ways in which we can consolidate resources and get, at the county level, get help to a lot of the small business improvement districts. Because I know one that's being formed in Oakland Chinatown and one's being considered in Little Saigon and there are other areas throughout the county that could benefit from having those kind of business improvement districts to help revitalize it. We can't have communities closing their businesses at 4 o'clock because of public safety concerns. So, having things like a, a, a police substation that they've been calling for, for a long time in Little Saigon and similarly in Oakland Chinatown and similarly in the business districts within, whether it's West Alameda or, or parts, well, we already have our, our police station that's really close in, in Park Street. But those are the kind of things that I'm hearing the businesses would like to see from, from their, their chambers and their alliances. And I think this is a role that the county can help facilitate as they have been doing for each of the cities within the district. And I think each of the businesses that are, are in need of these kind of services are not always getting it directly. And so having some multicultural effort and making sure that these type of And so having some multicultural effort and making sure that these type of resources are available to them, getting that outreach is going to be really important in, in a lot of these communities.
Okay. Rebecca, same question.
Thank you very much. Yes, I would be very honored to continue to work with the, with the East Bay Development Alliance for Business and to make sure to continue our work, as they have identified previously, efforts around infrastructure that supports businesses, safe crosswalks, better lighting. These are some of the things that we've worked together to pass funding for and to implement. We also want to recognize some important steps, including the funding we fought for and won out of the initial ARPA allocation through Oakland to go directly to our ethnic chambers of commerce to help businesses who are struggling and who, many of whom continue to struggle under the pandemic and under other issues that they are facing. And so I fought for that in Oakland, and I would continue to fight for that countywide to make sure we are directly providing the supports, including tenant assistance for businesses to improve their facilities, facade improvement grants, walking foot patrols for our business district. That's one of the specific things we fought for in our bu- budget restorations. Those had been cut by the Oakland administration, and they said there was no money left to fund them. And I went out and found ten million dollars that they didn't even know was there and brought budget amendments through council that restored the foot patrols for our business districts, including for Chinatown, and that funded the ethnic chambers to have direct local business support. We also need to push for the county's own spending to more thoroughly utilize local businesses so that that money returns in our community and recirculates and creates local jobs and local opportunity. We also worked and need to continue to expand countywide to give businesses greater leeway to utilize outdoor spaces to do business. And that has allowed some of them to make changes that allowed them to thrive. We need to continue to do that as well as to support ADA access improvements, sidewalk improvements, remove illegal dumping, and make sure that we are providing those safety patrols, both through the community safety ambassadors and through the police foot patrols, as well as making sure that we are repairing broken sidewalks and providing for those crosswalks that allow people to access the businesses. Now, you asked also about the audit. There was recently an audit from the Oakland City Auditor that came out that did identify some troubling missteps by the Oakland administration in terms of how they do administer and implement the homeless programs. It is a rather scathing report, and I agree with its overall thrust. I don't know that anybody is on the line from the Oakland Mayor's Office in terms of wanting to defend why they did what they did. But they absolutely fought for money to go unaccountably in ways that did not prioritize the most successful programs. Some of the most successful programs are those which have rooms and staff on site, such as the Lake Merritt Lodge, which I have been fighting to retain, and we absolutely need accountability in where the funds have gone.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for adding that. Okay, our last question. We have seen an alarming rise in violent crime in our neighboring city of Oakland, including a string of homicides in the last couple of weeks, as well as ongoing hate crimes. How would you propose keeping our communities safe? We'll start with Rebecca Kaplan.
Yes, thank you very much. We have seen a horrific rise in gun crime, both in Oakland and in other areas. But since we are talking about this area, let's talk about what's going on locally. As you probably know, there are no gun stores in Oakland, and there are no gun manufacturers in Oakland. But there were people who are profiting by selling death into our community. Street corner gun dealers, people who go to jurisdictions with laxer gun laws and buy guns and bring them back and sell them in our community. And in recent years, growing use of what's called ghost guns, where people ship gun parts through the mail, where they then assemble them without a traceable emblem on them. This has created a rise in gun violence that is devastating our communities. So we have passed laws to ban the ghost guns, and we have passed budget amendments to add funding for gun tracing. We've added funding for ShotSpotter, which allows for immediate detection of gunshots where and when they go off. And we absolutely need for the personnel to be assigned and responding to those when they go off so that they can catch the shooters and trace the sources of illegal guns and put them out of business. Another specific thing I would say, because this question is also about what we could do as a county, is that our county has been hit by organized armed robbery caravans. This is not just someone who spontaneously decides to commit a robbery. These are organized groups who are coming into our community, hitting pharmacies, hitting dispensaries, hitting other businesses, ramming through their windows, stealing pharmaceutical drugs and other things that they can resell. And so, because they have hit places in Oakland and San Leandro and the unincorporated area of the county, we need a county-wide effort to shut them down. They're not hitting just one city, and this is clearly a premeditated organized group that is operating for profit. We need to utilize the power of the Sheriff's Department, which has Crime Lab with capacity so that we can analyze the evidence from those cases so that we can track the people down. And we have also authorized a new technology called Star Chase, which is a device that law enforcement can essentially attach a tracker to a fleeing car so that they can then have a GPS to track where that vehicle went. And we need to utilize that type of technology to identify where these people are going, identify their hubs, and put them out of business. Finally, we've also worked together with our local businesses on an additional strategy to add to our toolbox, which is where we have vehicles that have been ramming through business windows. We are putting up physical barriers, in some cases, concrete barriers, in other cases, metal devices so that people physically would be prevented from driving through those windows, and that also needs to be part of the package. Thank you.
Thank you. And Lena Tam.
It has continued to be incredibly heartbreaking to have to attend vigils when we see innocent community members being gunned down. It's truly become a public health crisis. We were at a vigil with Moms Demand Action as one of their endorsed candidates. I wanted to make sure that the families and, and also the people that are responding to this have the support and care that they need. Because it's very traumatizing, and it's taken a toll on our healthcare workers. For example, two weeks ago, Highland Hospital, a Level One Adult Trauma Center, saw twenty-four shooting victims in one week. Not all of them make the news. It wasn't the one at, at City Hall. And one of the physicians died by suicide at Highland. It, it has become that, that tolling on our, our community. We need to provide the resources and the tools for public safety. We, we have a number of laws. There were a hundred and eleven California laws that in some way restrict the manner in which we deal with firearms. And this past June, the state legislature passed ten new laws on gun safety. But nationally, we still have a truly broken system. We need more resources to enforce the laws that we have. For example, we have this prohibited persons law that authorizes law enforcement to seize guns from anyone on a list that is, that includes people that are convicted of any court of crime that's punishable by imprisonment, who's been a fugitive, who's been arrested for domestic violence, who's been dishonorably discharged from the, from the armed forces. All of these lists need to be constantly kept up to date, and they need to be enforced. And those are the kind of resources that we need to provide our law enforcement so they can get guns off the street. Because even the District Attorney, which you'll hear later, has already found that two thousand people commit eighty percent of the crimes. And you, you have to get at these, at the root cause, because you don't want to end up in a situation where you're, you're, you're basically putting a Band-Aid on an open wound. You, you need to suture the wound, then put the Band-Aid on. So those are the kind of things that I want to see is to have the resources put and not cut the budgets of our law enforcement officials.
Great. All right. So do we have time for a bonus question or not, Becca?
We don't. We do have time for two-minute closing remarks from each candidate. Unfortunately, it looks like we lost our clock. So I will keep, I will try to keep an eye on the clock unless we can have that added back in.
Get your phone out and, and clock it. I just want to thank everyone for attending, and I hope that our forum helped you make up your mind. So Election Day is November eighth, second Tuesday of November, and get out there and vote. So with that, let's start with Lena Tam with a two-minute close.
Thank you, Gordon, and thank you for hosting this forum. I want to work with all of you to help small businesses recover from the pandemic and address the issues that I prioritize with dealing with homelessness, community safety, and mental health access. I bring a proven track record of collaboration along with the depth and the breadth of experience and leadership skills to the board. Having served on the Alameda City Council's Vice Mayor, the Alameda Healthcare District Board as Board President, and the Alameda County Planning Commission as Chair. I continue to advocate for policies and projects that improve our quality of life in District Three outside of these positions through my activism with the Legal Women Voters, the Asian Pacific Democratic Caucus, the Friends of the Park, and the Alameda Hospital Foundation. I've promoted open space, food security, supporting projects like pedestrian safety, affordable housing, and condemning hate crimes. I'm honored and really enjoy the support and endorsement of the East Bay Times, all three mayors in the district, Oakland, Alameda, and San Leandro, along with Supervisors Dave Brown and Dave Alpert, former Supervisor Alice Lightbicker, Senator Don Prada, and State Controller Betty Yee, State Treasurer Fiona Ma, County Assessor Fong Law, the American Association of University Women, the Alameda Contra Costa Medical Association, and the East Bay Association of Villagers, along with over a hundred and fifty community leaders that are listed at lenatam.com. I would be really honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Rebecca for two-minute close.
Thank you so much, and it is a great pleasure to be here with all of you tonight. I know that we can and we must build a stronger and healthier future, and I would be honored to have your vote to strengthen our public health, our mental health, and our public hospital system, to house the homeless and help get them off the streets, and ensure that our county works together with our cities to solve these vital problems. Thank you for mentioning how important it is that we do not cut our vital programs that tackle gun violence. The ceasefire program is, in Oakland, is one that I worked together with grassroots community to launch. And for multiple years, gun violence was going down in Oakland. We still don't have a good explanation of why the mayor of Oakland cut the ceasefire program last year. I'm glad that you now say you disagree with that. I was very proud to work together with my colleagues on the council, both to find the money to restore the ceasefire program as well as the fire stations that had been cut, and to bring that through council and pass that action. I know that we need to support our local and small businesses, and that investments in them pay back to our community. These are investments that are not a one-way, but rather create the virtuous cycle of creating jobs in our community, creating revenue in our community, and that is something that I am committed to doing. I have worked together already, even though I am not currently in county government, to strengthen vital programs, including access to healthy food. I am a strong supporter of making sure everyone in our community has the resources to be healthy. And when our All-in-Eats program let me know that they didn't have the funds for the food delivery to those in need, I found the money and passed that even already through the Oakland City Council to help deliver healthy food to those who are struggling. These are the types of innovative efforts we can and must bring to strengthen our county and lift up our place in the region. I would be so honored to have your vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you both. We are actually going to take a break now. We really appreciate having both of you here. Thank you so much for your time. But for our audience, please stay tuned, because we will be back in three to five minutes. And we will be continuing with our District Attorney candidates at six-twenty PM. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, how you doing?
Well, good to see you both. We'll get started in one minute.
Okay, thank you. Becca, was there a questionnaire?
There was not. We are going to have five questions, and I will, I'll talk about the, the format in just a moment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And is it the plan that will be done by seven? Or seven thirty?
Seven AM. We're in, we're an efficient group.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, we have our co-moderator back, so it is six-twenty. I think we'll go ahead and get started with this portion of the program. I am Becca Prada. I am Becca Perata, the Vice Chair of the Alameda Chamber and Economic Alliance, and my partner here is Gordon Galvin. Gordon, you can introduce yourself.
I'm a longtime San Leandro Chamber member, a member of the Board of Directors for the Eden Healthcare District, and a very interested party in these upcoming elections, and this is really an interesting race. So, let's get with it with that, and the first question.
Actually, we're going to do intros.
No, we're going to do the intro. That's right.
And I will say just a couple of housekeeping items. So, we do have five questions, but we're going to start with introductions, three minutes each, and then we're going to go into five questions with three-minute responses, and then we will close with your closing comments at two minutes each. I've just been informed that we lost our timer, so I will keep time.
Bummer.
And I'll just, I'll figure something out and give you a warning, but you've got three minutes to start with an introduction, and we're going to go ahead and start with you, Pamela Price, please.
Just put a finger up, Becca.
Oh, wait, maybe our timer is back. This might be good news.
There it is.
There we go. Perhaps. There we go, Pamela.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, good evening. Thank you for having me. I am excited to be in conversation with the business community, having been a businesswoman, a small business owner in this community since 1991. I started my own firm in downtown Oakland in 1991 and have had a great legal career, arguing cases pretty much all over Northern California. Been able to argue as high as the United States Supreme Court and, you know, doing cases in Fresno and Sacramento and Solano and Marin, but always been happy to come home to Oakland and Alameda County. And I bought my first building in downtown Oakland in 1999. I'm the first black woman to buy a building, an office building in Oakland, and then bought my second building at the corner of Ninth and Clay in 2010. So, I have had a wonderful experience as a business owner and part of this community, and having been here since 1978. So, I'm really excited. I understand the challenges that small businesses face, having seen some pretty major corporations and worked with counsel on solving problems and issues around that. I have a pretty good understanding of how big things work, having served as the court-appointed monitor for Contra Costa County, as well as for the California Department of Corrections. I know a little bit about how agencies work, so I'm excited to be with you and to be able to serve as the next District Attorney of Alameda County. I decided to run for this seat because for too long prosecutors have forgotten that their mission is to protect public safety by advancing justice. When we talk about crime and the color of crime and the sources of crime, and the things that concern all of us as, you know, business owners and residents, and we have families that we raise in our communities, we understand that public safety is key for everyone, and it's not something that's unique to the business community. Sometimes things happen in your business and in the neighborhoods where businesses are located. I've had that experience as well, but understanding that businesses are very important parts of the community, and I really appreciate that I am running for this office for the first time. I'm the first person to run since 1966, and that this community actually has a choice, that we are having a conversation about what justice looks like and what our concerns are, and how will the District Attorney's Office address those concerns? That has not happened, had not happened until we broke open that door in 2017. So, thank you for having us, and I look forward to the conversation.
Thank you. Okay, turning it over to you, Terry Wiley, please.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here tonight. I too look forward to us having a fruitful discussion. You know, we have a District Attorney's Office that needs new leadership. It has to be leadership that is about safety and justice. You know, my experience as the Chief Assistant District Attorney has enabled me to personally understand the strengths, the weaknesses, and potential of the office. I've been with the District Attorney's Office for 32 years. I was born and raised in the Bay Area, I'm the youngest of 12 kids. I had the unfortunate experience of my dad passing when I was seven. So, I grew up in an environment where, you know, there were no illusions as to what me and my twin brother would have to do to make a life, and that was to really get a good education. Fortunately, we were able to, I was able to get a good education from UC Berkeley, and then I went on to law school and started in the District Attorney's Office. And then when you fast-forward to today, you know, since the primary, I picked up a number of additional endorsements to the ones that I had already obtained. I've been endorsed by four of the five members of the Board of Supervisors. I've just recently received the endorsement of Attorney General Rob Bonta, also former California Assembly Member Lonnie Hancock, and a host of others. I've been endorsed by 14 of the 16 mayors in Alameda County. And I think I've received those endorsements because I represent balanced and experienced leadership. You know, I want to build a working partnership with local law enforcement, the newly-elected county sheriff, and the Alameda Courts and the Board of Supervisors, so that we can provide effective law enforcement with fairness and justice. When I look at what is ahead, you know, there, by any, any way you look at what we are dealing with, there has been such an astronomical rise in violent crime, particularly in Oakland, and it's impacted businesses, it's impacted the way of life for everyone in the community, and for the first time in my 32 years, when you walk around the county, people don't feel safe. They don't feel safe, that their cars are being broken into, catalytic converters are being stolen. The murder rate is out of control, and this has a tremendous impact on business, and we understand that. And I think that what I want to do tonight with this discussion, and what I hope we'll be able to do, is show the differences between the leadership that I represent and what Ms. Price represents. Thank you.
That's great. Nice job from both of you on the opening. All right, now let's get into it. So, the first question, and we'll start with you, Terry, is please share your experience that specifically qualifies you to lead one of the state's largest law enforcement agencies, and tell us what you would identify as the strengths of that office.
Thank you for that question. Well, I've been with the District Attorney's Office for 32 years, and in that 32 years, I've held 21 different positions in the District Attorney's Office. I've run every division in the Criminal Division. Well, I've run every division in the District Attorney's Office with the exception of our Consumer and Environmental Protection Division, including Juvenile. And Juvenile is, of course, a very important division to understand, in addition to all of the other offices in the District Attorney's Office. You know, I think that when you look at what we are dealing with today, I think the number-one priority, you have to have a plan with how you're going to address the violence and the serious crime that is occurring in Alameda County, and specifically, I keep coming back to Oakland because that's where a lot of the violent crime is occurring. We have a specific plan of how we're going to address the violent crime in Alameda County by implementing the Crime Strategies Unit. And the Crime Strategies Unit is going to be a data-driven unit that focuses on wherever the data takes us is where you will find our DAs, and we are going to put seven to eight of our top trial lawyers in that division. And because what we know is there are about 2,000 individuals that are driving at least 70% of the violent crime in the county. And we want to work with Ceasefire of the Oakland Police Department and other violent suppression agencies and the other respective police agencies in Alameda County. And, but it'll be a data-driven county, a data-driven operation, so that if we're in a particular area focusing on the individuals that are driving the crime, and they happen to be of a certain ethnic group, it's not going to be because of that particular ethnic group. It's going to be because that is where the data is telling us we need to be. And they will focus on those individuals, and we're confident, extremely confident, that if we're able to implement our Crime Strategies Unit, we will have a tremendous impact on both serious and violent crime in Alameda County. And I'll tell you why it's also important, because it is those same groups of individuals that are driving a lot of the retail theft that is occurring in the county, and that has had such a tremendous impact on businesses. And it's also impacting businesses from the standpoint that when you look at Oakland-Chinatown, for example. I remember when I started in the DA's office, Chinatown businesses would be open until nine o'clock at night. Today, Chinatown businesses close at four o'clock because people are so fearful of being victims of crime. We're going to change that under my leadership.
Great. Thank you. Pamela, same question.
Yeah, could I have the question read back, please?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Please share your experience that specifically qualifies you to lead one of the state's largest law enforcement agencies, and tell us what would you identify as the strengths of that office?
Okay, thank you. First, I want to note, as I have noted, I spent three years as the court-appointed monitor for the California Department of Corrections, which is a far larger agency than the Alameda County DA's office. I have been suing the Department of Corrections since 1991, and so I am very familiar with our criminal justice system and the the resources that go into incarceration. I've been inside of Corcoran State Prison, I've been inside of Pelican Bay State Prison, I've been inside of CSP SAC and CSP Solano. I've tried cases involving officers at Mule Creek. I've gone to High Desert. I've seen how the end product of what this office does and how it impacts the families, the people who work there, and the people who are incarcerated there. And so I bring that lens of a broader experience to the table. I also served as a court-appointed monitor for Contra Costa County for about 12 years, looking at their EEO data and their different divisions and departments. I'm very familiar with how county governments are organized. Also, like many of you, I've been a small business owner, and doing that is not a, it's more than just a nine-to-five. It's building a life, it's creating value for the community and for the people that you serve, and that, to me, is the strength of the DA's office, and the mission of the DA's office is to administer justice fairly across this county without regard to your race, your gender, your economic status, or your zip code. That's fundamentally important, and I think the strength of the office is that the resources that it has can, and under my administration, will be used to improve the lives of the people of the community. That has to be the mission. You protect public safety by advancing justice, which means you engage with community, you listen to community, you don't make your decisions in darkness, you don't operate without transparency, equity, or accountability. I think the strength of the office is hopefully that I will find that there are people inside the office who are committed to this community and committed to serving folks here, whether they be victims, or the families of perpetrators, or small business owners. All of us have a stake in this criminal justice system and in how the DA's office operates. And we're not there yet, but we'll get there. We will be a partner with this community, and the policies and the practices of my administration will reflect the values of this community. Alameda County has voted overwhelmingly in favor of progressive criminal justice reform, and we can achieve that in this next election as we hopefully step forward in November. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. In the next two years, California's 58 counties will be tasked with setting up new court systems to address the needs of people with severe mental illness who languish on the street. What is your opinion on Care Court? And how do you see the District Attorney's Office implementing and maintaining this new system? And we'll start with you, Pamela.
Sure. Yeah, I am excited about parts of Care Court. I'm excited about the focus of it. When I bought my first building in downtown Oakland in 1999, the first thing we noticed was that there was a homeless person sleeping in the front door of my new office, and apparently that was his home, and so we were intruding upon him. And we had to address that situation. We did so without calling the police. You know, we had conversations with him. We let him know, this is a law firm. We can't have you, you know, you can't get up here, and when we come in the morning, we can't have you waking up on our doorstep. You know, he wasn't happy about that. We had some incidents where we found some surprises on our doorstep. But, you know, eventually, he moved on. We did not over-criminalize him. And understanding that a lot of the people on the street, not all of them, but many of the people on the street do have mental health challenges, and we know that the Department of Justice has given notice to Alameda County that unless we address our 51-50 crisis, because we are leading the state in the number of involuntary commitments. So, we've got to come up with a way of balancing the needs of people on the street with the resources, the new resources that the governor has given us to invest, and we've got to be smart about how we do that. The DOJ has given us a mandate that we have to create community-based care systems. I'm endorsed by the families of the seriously mentally ill because I'm listening to them, because they're telling me that their loved ones, this is, the street is where their loved ones actually find peace. That cannot be true, because they're just cycling, we are cycling people between John George and Santa Rita County Jail and the streets. They get a Bark pass, a lot of people are in Bark. Not everyone who is unhoused in our community has mental health challenges, but we know that a large portion of them do, and we've identified in my campaign last year that if we, in our conversations with Basma, in our conversations with mental health experts, that if we could have an impact on those suffering from mental health, if we could expand the criteria of our mental health course, if we could use the resources and the power and the vision of the District Attorney to really respond to the needs of this community in a real way, that that would have a ripple effect. We would reduce homelessness, we would reduce crime, we would reduce the kinds of challenges that businesses face, where people are wandering in and out, the kinds of encounters that, you know, consumers have with people. All of that will be impacted by the District Attorney actively addressing the issue of homelessness and making sure that we protect tenants' rights and that we do so much more aggressively than we've done in the past.
Thank you. And Terry Wiley, the same question.
Well, I think the growth that we've seen in the number of homeless and mentally ill has been just striking. And, you know, when you drive around the city of Oakland, for example, and you see the homeless encampments, and just, you see the severity of the problem. One of the things that we've done in the District Attorney's Office is we created the CARES Program. The CARES Program, first branch of it has been set up in the Fruitvale in Oakland, in which if you, if law enforcement comes into contact with someone who's in having a mental breakdown or in a, having a mental episode, rather than transporting that person to Santa Rita Jail, you can bring the person to the CARES Program where we have a licensed psychologist who can assess the mental health of the individual. We also have a person who is, has what we call a lived experience, who can identify with the individual and assist with the assessment and making sure that the homeless person is comfortable. And the Board of Supervisors was so impressed with our CARES Program, they just funded $9 million to open up two additional CARES Programs in the east county and south part of the county. So, we've begun to address a lot of the mental health issues, but I'm also on the Reimagining Adult Justice in Alameda County Committee. And there are a number of things that we are about to engage in. One is CalAim, in which we are starting to look at how we can use both local, state, and federal funding to address some of the homeless issues with the individuals who in many cases are dual-diagnosed. They are homeless, and they're having mental health issues, and then they will self-medicate with drugs or alcohol because they don't have medical coverage. So, the county is going to focus on CalAim, in which we are going to be seeking to provide health coverage to those who are homeless and health coverage to those And health coverage to those who are uh, re-entering society from state prison. So that if they are dealing with any kind of mental issues, that they will have uh, health coverage in order to get treatment. Uh, but also we want to partner with nonprofits that are hiring. Uh, folks with mental health issues and folks that are returning from state prison. Because at the end of the day. Unless you can get some of these individuals working and, and, and being paid a living wage. Uh, their homelessness in the situation will continue. So the DA's office is. Prepared under my leadership to give it a multifaceted approach. Uh, in terms of treatment, but also helping them get jobs. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I, I remember when I was a kid, uh, many, many years ago. There was a campaign that said, use a gun, go to prison. Um, I don't know how that worked out, um, but it leads to my next question, which is our neighbors in Oakland have grown frustrated. Living in fear of increased violent gun crime. Under what circumstances would you plea bargain a case when there is use of a firearm? And when is a prison sentence appropriate? And we'll start with Terry Wiley.
Well, thank you for that question Gordon. Uh, you know. Uh, the use of gun, of the use of guns in Alameda County and particularly Oakland. And the impact that it has on the surrounding cities. Uh, has been unbelievable. Uh, you know, a friend of mine from out of state. Who is a businessman and travels all over the country. Uh, I was talking to him on the phone and he said, you know, I don't really even like to come to the Bay Area anymore. Uh, you know, and it's because of the homeless problem, the violence that they hear about. And this has got to be addressed. Uh, and how we would address it and specifically in answering your question. I don't think you can, you can uh, use a one-size-fits-all policy. Uh, when it comes to uh, guns, but I think that you do have to take. Uh, those individuals that are found in possession of guns very seriously. Uh, and it's got to be treated very seriously. And so if you were an individual that has a lot of prior. Uh, uh, violent and serious felony convictions. And now you're, and, and, and you're strictly uh, um, uh. You're not supposed to be in possession of any firearms and now you're arrested with firearms. Well, that's an individual. That you have to take a look at because, you know, in most cases, what we have found, particularly in Oakland. That if they're found in possession of a firearm, generally they will use it. And uh, and, and so we take the, we are going to continue to treat those found in possession of firearms. Very seriously. But again, the reason I say you can't use a one-size-fits-all policy. And I'll give you one quick example. There was an individual, a Vietnamese individual that was found in possession of a firearm. He had no record. Uh, he had been in America for tw- for twenty years. He had no record. And uh, he was found in possession of a firearm and it was determined that he had been shot and he had been robbed. And he was in fear of his life. You might want to treat that case a little bit differently. Than someone who's got a lot of serious and violent felony convictions and is now found in possession of a firearm. Because inevitably, when we are solving these murder cases, it is the individuals that many times we find. Have prior violent felonies and pri- and, and serious felony convictions. That are committing many of the homicides, many of the violent shootings and many of the uh, robberies and carjackings. And the kind of crimes that cause every citizen in Alameda County to feel less safe when they go outside their home. So we're, we're going to treat those crimes very seriously and uh, but we're going to do it on a case-by-case basis.
Great, thank you. Uh, Pamela Price, same question.
Sure. And the question is, what would I do about the case where someone uses, has a gun or uses a gun? Can you say the question again?
Under what circumstances would you plea bargain a case? When there is the use of a firearm and further, when is it, when is a prison sentence appropriate?
So if you don't know, you should know that ninety-five percent of the cases that are processed by the DA's office. Result in a plea bargain. This is one of the issues that has been raised over and over again is how do they? If, if we didn't have a way to coerce people to take a plea, then the system would fall apart. Because there are so many people coming through and the backlog is so great. Um, we're in this situation because of the kind of inconsistency. That Mr. Wiley has described as a policy of the district attorney's office. Number one, we have too many guns in Alameda County and we have a DA's office that turned a blind eye. To the proliferation of guns and did not treat it as a serious issue. I've lived in East Oakland since nineteen ninety-seven. And I've watched the spiral of violence and the explosion of guns. And in the last three, three, two to three years, we've seen an explosion of ghost guns. And whereas other district attorneys in other counties took the initiative. And even the attorney general took the initiative to go after the ghost gun manufacturers and begin to address this. At a, at a serious level, our DA's office basically did not take the initiative, did not join the lawsuits. And pretty much ignored the problem. And you know, unfortunately, it does come down to. Uh, once again, as usual, race in the system. If you're a black person and you use a gun. Like you said, there, there was a time that would use a gun, go to prison. Well, black people went to prison. If you were not black and they've looked at the enhancements because you, DA's use gun enhancements as a way. Of, as a consequence of imprisoning people and that what they found now is upward ninety percent of the people who have. Are serving extra long sentences in California prisons are there because they had gun enhancements. And they're black people or brown people. So gun enhancements became a tool of racism. Uh, acted out in the system. In terms of what I, I mean, again, you have to look at each case. I've represented eighteen-year-olds who had a gun. Uh, got caught with a gun. And when I said, why do you have a gun? It's because I feel safe. I've been threatened. I need a gun. But that young man would, you know, was prosecuted to the full extent of the law. So whether or not you plea bargain a case with a gun does depend on the facts of the case and looking at the injuries. My approach will be to involve anyone who was assaulted with a gun will have a say. About how we address that crime and how we respond to it. And whether or not we send them to prison. Whether or not we send them to a diversion program, whether or not we hold them accountable through a restorative justice program. We're going to work out some alternatives because the current approach that has been pursued for the last fifty years has failed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next question. Retail businesses face an increase in vandalism, shoplifting and vehicle break-ins. There is concern that the current laws seem to mostly support short jail sentences or none at all. What sentencing would you propose for these crimes, particularly for repeat offenders? And what are your solutions to shut down the market for stolen goods? And we'll go ahead and start with you Pamela Price, please.
Yes, the market for stolen goods, exactly. Somebody stole my car. And they stole it because they wanted the catalytic converter. And the idea that there is a market for catalytic converters is what is the driving force? That is affecting all of us. And for me, what was of concern was the comparison between OPD. And I love Oakland, I live in Oakland, but OPD has a terrible record when it comes to solving crime. Whether it's homicides or homicide solve rate at thirty percent is totally unacceptable. And there was nothing done to solve the crime of somebody taking my car. And stealing another catalytic converter in front, from a, a church van in front of my house. Contrast that with the Livermore Police Department, who are to be commended because they figured out. Who was stealing the catalytic converters in Livermore and they traced them to the supply, to the, to the shop house. Or whatever they call it, where they're actually distributing or redistributing these things down in San Joaquin County. And they busted that ring. And it only took four officers to do that. And so to me, that's effective police work. And that's what we need in every department. We do need to prioritize people who prey in these criminal enterprises and rings. But we also need to recognize the low-level crime that you've described, which is a function of poverty. And that is unfortunately, as poverty has grown in the Bay Area, as we have seen. Our unhoused population explode without our city officials taking any responsibility or accountability. Or the county to address these issues, of course. And then the pandemic, of course, it exploded. Because people lost their ability to work, they lost their ability to make money, they lost their ability to behave and, and to. And not behave, but to act like normal consumers. We live in a consumer society, okay? And we expect everyone to pay for things and to buy things. And when people can't afford to buy things or to pay things. Pay for things, then they do different things. And sometimes that runs afoul of the law. The legislature and the court system generally has said that we have a problem with how we administer justice. The system is broken. And so we cannot go back to incarcerating people for low-level crimes. We do have to break the cycle of violence and our approach, our plan is to address. Uh, redress the diversion courts that exist to put people in those courts, but to hold them accountable. And to make, to give them the opportunity to recognize the impact that that behavior has on. Uh, destabilizing the community and hurting everyone. It hurts all of our residences. If a business is victimized in the way that you described. And so we've got to come up with some innovative approaches to address those issues. And break the cycle. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Terry Wiley, the same question, please.
Yes, uh, well, just real briefly regarding the, the last question on firearms, I do want to note that. Last week in our last candidate's forum, Ms. Price indicated that uh, the problem with guns. Is that the DA's office was giving too many people permits to uh, own guns. And we had to inform her that the DA's office does not issue permits uh, to own guns. Uh, now regarding this question. Uh, you know, one of the big problems that has occurred uh, with some of our law enforcement agencies is they don't have enough police officers. And Ms. Price was one of the leading voices to defund the Oakland Police Department. That resulted in the police department losing uh, nearly a hundred police officers. They were at seven hundred plus officers. And when she and members of the Oakland City Council led to defund the police, it was actually defunded. And they've lost nearly a hundred officers. Now there's this big push to try and refund. Uh, the police, the police agencies. So one of the problems is we do not have enough uh, police officers in Oakland. Secondly, what is driving a lot of the mass retail theft are gangs. And which is why uh, you have to be able to focus on uh, the gangs with my crime strategies unit. Because not only are they driving a lot of the violent crime and the serious crime, they were also driving a lot of the retail theft. Uh, that was occurring during this past uh, holiday season. And so we are going to focus on, on, on the gangs that are driving a lot of the crime. And in terms of how the courts are treating the low-level non-violent property crimes. Is there's not enough accountability baked into the system. Because you see, I don't have a problem. Uh, if someone, if we have, if we see crimes that are born from object poverty, substance abuse and even mental illness. Putting that person in a diversion program or an alternative to incarceration. To try and assist them with their substance abuse problem, their mental health issues, or to just get them on a different trajectory. But if you have retail crimes that are occurring simply from a basic profit motive. Uh, those are going to be treated differently. And even the, even if you have deaths that are occurring as a result of one of the other three reasons I just gave. You still have to have accountability in the system. So if they're in a diversion program. And they violate some of the rules of the diversion program, you have to bake some accountability into the system. Or the individual has no incentive to try and change. So under my leadership, there will be many discussions with the courts as to baking some accountability. Into those diversion programs and alternatives to incarceration.
Gordon, you're muted.
Yeah, Gordon, you're muted. Do I have to have an opportunity to respond to Mr. Wiley's representation about me?
In your closing comments, absolutely. You have two minutes at the end. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, do I get extra time for that? Since that really is not part of what we're doing here, but.
That's, that's not our, that's not our format, but you could take some of your closed time to, to respond.
Alright.
So the question I have is the Alameda County District Attorney's Office is a national leader in prosecuting human trafficking. And protecting its survivors. Please explain the HEAT program. And if you would continue it and/or make any changes to it. And let's start with Terry Wiley.
Yes, thank you for that question. Well, you know, we are one of the country's leaders in our uh, human trafficking program. You know, we train our staff and really the organization to utilize trauma-informed care and evidence-based practices. When providing services. Because here's what we know. One in four women will experience some form of domestic violence at some point in her life. Uh, domestic violence is the single greatest cause of injury to women. Uh, women are seven more times uh, more likely than men to be victims of violent assault. From a current or former intimate partner. Sixty-one percent of women that uh, engage in prostitution have been raped one or more times. Fifty-five percent of prostitutes were in foster care as youths and are from group homes. Eighty-two percent of prostitutes are runaways. Seventy percent of prostitutes started their lives as abused children. So you know, you're dealing with a very damaged uh, part of society. Uh, and then these individuals, in, in, in many cases, men are taking advantage of these women. And it's very important that as a district attorney's office, we remain steadfast. In prosecuting the pimps. Not allowing the, many of these young girls to be revictimised. Uh, because they are being abused by their pimps. And so we will continue our, the programs that we have in place. And I can tell you it's challenging because despite the Alameda County District Attorney's Office being the leader in human trafficking. And addressing human trafficking, Oakland still remains a hub of human trafficking. You know, over the last three or four weeks, I've been meeting personally with some of the experts. Uh, in human trafficking and these are women that um, are very knowledgeable about the whole human trafficking. Um, uh, uh, system of operation in Oakland. And you know, we're trying to figure out, you know, how do we get a hu- a handle on this? Uh, because right now they are centrally based in the area of Little Saigon, where a lot of the violent crime has been occurring uh, recently. And so it's how do we get control without revictimising the young women? But at the same time, you have people coming out of their homes with their kids. And they're like, look, we don't want to come out of our homes with our kids and see these young girls half naked, standing on the corners. So we got to try and figure that out. And how do we, how do we prevent Oakland from remaining the hub of human trafficking? Uh, in uh, the Bay Area.
Uh, Pamela Price, same question.
Yeah, it is absolutely essential that we recognize that Alameda County is the third largest hub for human trafficking in this country. Not just Oakland. And perhaps that's why the problem persists. Because for all the benefits and the hoopla around the HEAT program and all the resources. That the district attorney's office has put into that program, we remain the top, one of the top places in the country. Across the county for human trafficking. And so as I come into this, I recognize that what we have been doing. Is not working. It is not effective. I am very familiar with the fact that we have been arresting and prosecuting young women for years. That we have given them criminal records without regard to whether or not they were victim. That the program needs to be expanded to include services to young males and transgender victims. Survivors of human trafficking, that the program needs to be expanded to initiate civil prosecutions. To attack the foundations and the enablers of human trafficking, such as these hotels that know full well. How this system is being run, that they are using, traffickers are able to find havens throughout Alameda County. Not just in Oakland, uh, to uh, provide, to provide. uh, to uh, provide, to provide services and to run their businesses. We have to attack this at the root, okay? We have to create partnerships with community organizations that will provide resources and support and mentoring to young women in, across Alameda County. We've got to do it as a regional uh, if, approach it as a regional problem because a lot of times what happens in Alameda County is young people are being brought here. We are, people are brought to our our county and, and put into a system here, but they didn't come, they came from other places. And so we've got to make sure that we're networking with other law enforcement agencies and other entities that are out there that are aware of how the traffic goes, okay? And this district attorney's office has failed to do that. We have to aggressively provide housing alternatives uh, to young women as well as again, support and mentorship. We have to, I plan to work with local officials such as Councilwoman Nikki Bass, who is very concerned about the track in her district and have she and I are collaborating and in conversation and we plan to work together to make sure that we identify the problems in her area and what are the solutions. And as your district attorney for the entire county, I will bring those solutions not just at the borders of Oakland, but across the entire county. Because that's how we are being judged, not as one city, but as based on the entire region and our relationship to that. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that. Uh, so we don't have time for a, a bonus question because we said we'd have you both out back on the campaign trail at seven o'clock. So it's seven oh two. And I just want to thank everyone again for attending this forum and I encourage you to vote uh, November eighth, second Tuesday. Uh, get out there and vote and I hope that this forum helped you uh, make up your mind. So with that, we're going to have a two minute close uh, from both candidates and we will start with Terry Wiley.
Well, again, thank you all for having us. Uh, you know, I will say that you know, the Alameda County District Attorney's Office is a hundred million dollar government agency. Uh, and it is a complex agency. And the role that we play in the community is a very important one. Uh, we face some of the greatest challenges with some of the populations that we have to deal with on a daily basis. And at the same time, you know, our number one priority is to keep the community safe. Uh, you really need someone who is ready to go day one with experience because it is a very difficult agency to come in and think you're going to run it when the largest agency you've ever run is a four lawyer law firm. Uh, and you think you can come take over a hundred million dollar government agency with four hundred and twenty-three employees with three divisions and think that you can come in and take charge of that operation and be effective. Uh, this is a complex agency. Now in terms of where we want to go, is we, you do not, you can have safety of the community and you can also have a more fair and just system of justice. Uh, you have to be someone who is fair. You have to be balanced, but more importantly, you have to be experienced. You have to, you, you're going to have to work with seventeen different police agencies in Alameda County. You have to try and get all seventeen edges, agencies moving in the same direction. You have to get everybody in the district attorney's office moving in the same direction as the policies that you want to implement. I've let the district attorneys that are currently in the office know what policies I want to implement. And they have endorsed me. I've been endorsed by the previous district attorney, or the current district attorney Nancy O'Malley because everyone is confident that I have the experience and that the direction I want to go is in line with the values of Alameda County. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Pamela Price, two minutes.
Thank you. I guess I want to first make sure that, I want to tell voters and anyone who listens to Mr. Wiley, please be sure to fact check everything he says to the extent that he claims that I've been, I have been involved in the public safety conversation in Alameda County. I've served as a pro bono counsel for the Coalition for Police Accountability and eighty, over eighty percent of Oakland residents passed Measure LL, which was what we were advocating for, to establish the Oakland Police Commission to establish oversight. That didn't have anything to do with the defund the police movement. Also, I'm, there's not, been no conversation about permitting uh, by the district attorney's office. So I urge you to look at the forum, whichever one he claims, I'm, I make these statements and you will see that that's not true. I have the experience of living in this county of reforming agencies, of solving problems for everyday people for three, thirty years in this community of listening to families, listening to victims, representing people in their worst moment. And that's really the challenge and the call to become the next district attorney. Um, I am, uh, I have a degree from Yale and two degrees from UC Berkeley. And yes, I ran a successful business for thirty years. More than four people were employed in my office. And I met payroll and I bought and sold real estate and I had a wonderful career as a lawyer and as a businesswoman and have been very successful. And if I am not able to successfully run this office, then I probably should give all three of my degrees back where they came from. So the voters, I've been endorsed by the overwhelming number of people in this community, but ultimately I do want the endorsement of the business community and I want to be a partner with you as we move forward to transform a system so that it works for everybody and not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you to both of you again for taking time out of your busy schedule. I know the campaigns are tough, they're brutal, it's just going to get worse over the next six weeks, but we appreciate you being here tonight. And I want to thank my co-host, the superstar, uh, uh, Becca Perata.
Thanks, Gordon, and thanks all of you for joining us. So ballots should be dropping in a couple of weeks and uh, don't forget to vote on November eighth. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Everybody.
Thank you for having us.
Good night.
Good night.